Great idea.
I'll talk with you if you guys want to do a tour.
Yeah. I know my wife's very interested.
Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, Monday, November 2nd, 2015. Chief, would you like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Could I have a motion for approval for the minutes of Monday, October 5th, 2015, regular and executive sessions?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Yes, yes.
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 Do we have any public?
October 19th.
Oh, excuse me, on October 19th, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
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 Do we have any public comment? No public comment. Catherine, I guess we start with you and all your requests.
If I could just start with a little bit of an overview.
Sure.
I've obviously met with the DPW Director, and we wanted to get prepared for the winter season, and we wanted to make sure that we were adequately staffed. We wanted to make sure that we had the adequate resources. And we also wanted to make sure that our policy is consistent with addressing the needs of our citizenry. With that having been said, after review, you're gonna hear ultimately, maybe not tonight, but part and parcel to this process will be one extra truck going into the CIP, a current F-350 being changed to a 550 with a sander, more funds being potentially allocated for the purposes of snow removal operations, and adjustments to the rates for private contractors. Inclusive of this is to ensure that each and every road that we're responsible for, whether it be public or private, be sanded or salted adequately so that the travel along any of our roads is safe and it's clear from snow or ice to the best of our ability. And when we're dealing with storms of the magnitude that we received last winter, it can certainly be challenging. But we certainly want to make sure that we're as prepared as possible. And you're going to hear these recommendations with a little bit more detail from the Director, but what I just referenced is something that I believe the Board should endorse as a matter of a policy relating to for snow removal operations to address all of the problems perceived or real that we've had to deal with historically regarding this issue.
Thank you.
Any questions on that? Catherine?
So the first items on the agenda are the acceptance of the various bids for the snow-related products. Salt, the ice band, and the sand. The recommendation for salt, the qualified bidder was Mid-American Salt LLC with a bid of $71.95 per ton. For sand, Cape Cod Aggregates at $13.50 per ton, and Safe Road Services for the ice band at $1.24 per gallon.
That's the liquid?
Yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, the low bid was disqualified from the Plymouth County process because they had not been on the list long enough. I did check with Town Council, with the DPW Director present. We cannot award the bid because of those specifications. My suggestion would be to go with this particular bid so that we have a supply on hand in case it snowed at the end of November or at the beginning of December, and we had no salt or sand. And then, in addition, go with a subsequent bidding process, independent of that, ourselves, and advertise for having a backup plan moving forward.
As you may recall, with the Big Blue Zard that we had last year, one of our issues was with getting salt delivered, you know, after that storm because that storm did affect, you know, every-
Excuse me, Catherine. I'm getting a thing saying, I can see you talking right into the mic. I wonder if you should move to that mic.
I can move that one over there.
Yeah, it's not loud at all.
Is that turned on? Tom? The mic that she's at?
Oh, that one is.
We'll try it. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, no. So, as the Town Manager indicated, we will accept the bid from the Plymouth County and Barnstable County process just so that we can start stockpiling before winter hits us. And at the same time, we will issue our own bid, which, you know, we can set our own terms for the contract. And one of those that we will be looking at is that they actually have a local, you know, within, you know, so many miles, access to salt so that hopefully we can not have that same issue that we had last year with delivery.
Do you have to go and get the salt, or is it delivered to us?
It is delivered to us. This is a delivered price.
Okay.
Last year, we tried to send trucks to even pick it up and had issues because every other city or town in the Commonwealth was doing the same thing.
Catherine, if I remember correctly, at some point, it's probably long gone, didn't they talk about using the transfer station at the base for storage?
We've, the Upper Cape Regional Transfer Station Board has actually talked about for next fiscal year issuing our own regional bid and having that as an option for, you know, a company to stockpile on site so that it would be even more local for-
Okay, good.
So I guess, so this delivery, is this gonna be housed? Where is this gonna be?
At the DPW, we have two sheds, a salt shed and a mix shed. So, once the bid or the contract is awarded and signed, we'll start ordering the material.
So that facility can hold this first delivery?
Yes.
Okay.
You have motions?
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to award the contract to Mid-Atlantic Salt LLC for the lowest qualifying bid of $71.95 per ton.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes, yes.
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 And make a motion for the contract to be awarded to Cape Cod Aggregates Corporation in the amount of $31.50 per ton.
$13.50.
$13.50 per ton for sand.
I'll second that motion.
Sorry.
If there is any conversation, just speak up, I'm not gonna ask any questions. Acceptance of that bid?
Yes.
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 And make a motion for ice band, the contract to be awarded to Safe Road Services in the amount of $1.24 per gallon.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
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 Do you want to stay with snow and ice? The next item actually is a roof bid.
Hey, probably easier to do that.
Okay. So the next was the contractor rates. So it has been several years since the town changed our rates. Gas prices have been relatively low and stayed low, so there really wasn't any, I guess, argument for increasing those. But as I'm sure all of you have heard, there's been a lot going on on the Cape with other towns because of this past winter and issues that we all had also with contractors. The Town of Barnstable decided that they would almost mirror the rates that Mass DOT pays their contractors, which has had the domino effect that, you know, other towns on the Cape have felt compelled to, you know, do that as well. I believe the Town of Yarmouth and the Town of Dennis also will be moving in that direction. So what you have in front of you tonight is a revised recommendation looking at our neighboring towns, specifically Barnstable, Falmouth, Sandwich, Mass DOT. And then the last column is what is recommended for our rates. So we are looking at an increase for all of the rates.
Now, Catherine, do you have certain independent people that fit each category that you deal with on this?
In the past, most of our contracted equipment has been a pickup truck. We have a few of the one-and-a-half-ton trucks, but mostly we're looking at pickup trucks.
So this will not put us at the level of DOT, but at the same time, it will keep us competitive for the sake of getting these private contractors.
I get no problem with that. If you had any problems, I know at one point, I guess it was quite a while back, getting contractors at this rate?
We all struggle to get as many as we would like to hire.
Let me ask you a question, and being snow removal is becoming such a priority for us, and is, would you be better off going $5 an hour above the other towns? Not often, I say, you spend more money.
I know, I was just gonna say.
It's a historic occasion.
I know, it is. Balloons are gonna come down.
Certainly, you know, up to the Board whether or not-
I mean, you're the one who would know though, would that give you an advantage?
I think this year will be the answer, and maybe that's something that we look at.
These are right terrifying, okay.
I think these make us much more competitive. In addition to the truck rates, there's also at the very bottom of the table, you know, an added rate for sanders. We have not been successful in the past with getting contracted sanding trucks. So I'm hoping that this will attract more than we have been able to in the past.
We've looked at these rates, and I did say to the Director, the first person that would be complaining would be myself. So I wanted to make sure she was satisfied.
Yeah, but you hit again a situation where it's beyond her control because you can't get-
Can't get contractors.
I agree with John, you raise a good point. I mean, when you, we're only gonna call these trucks when we need these trucks.
Yeah.
So when you need them, I mean, $5 an hour or more makes a difference if we get them. And to me, I'd rather have the trucks here when we need them. And that's what that call goes out, when we need them.
I think if you were to go in that direction, and I believe the Director would agree with us, we would be very comfortable with the DOT rates. I don't think you need to exceed those as long as you are equivalent to those. Yes, we are.
Why don't we just go up to them?
That's up to the Board.
I mean, I don't know, but comparatively to the other towns, I don't, I mean, I think we're going from 65 to 70. If you look at the comparative ratio, we're-
We're right there.
We're near the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I'd rather be at the top is what I'm saying. For $5 an hour, you know, this isn't something that's, you know, you're hiring a yearly employee or you're putting a truck on the road for the year. I'm just saying, I don't want to-
What are the, do we have a ballpark of how many hours we're talking? That this, I know that's a-
Yeah, it really depends on the winter.
I mean, if you're talking thousands times five, you're talking hundreds times five. Or less than a hundred, I mean, it makes a big difference.
Isn't the underlying premise here beneath the question that you want to be, have roads that are the example?
Yes.
We do.
We do.
Right. So, you know, if that's the case, then, you know, two things. You know, obviously, not being below the market at all, you know, not being second. You want to be the first call, you know, I think that, you know, along the lines of what Tom was saying. The other question I have is though, my impression last summer, last winter was that, given the size of the storms, we were too light.
We needed bigger trucks.
And so, we've addressed that to some extent with some equipment you've purchased based on town meeting, but you meant, you said in response to somebody else's question earlier that you're mostly looking at four-by-four pickups.
That's historically what we have hired.
Because that's what's there, or that's what we want?
No, I, that's what's there.
There.
So if you were to-
Everyone else is working with the DOD.
Well, but if you were higher on the, if you were at the top of this, if you set the market on the big stuff, is the big stuff out there and they're just going someplace else?
At this point, yes, they're going elsewhere. They're either going to the state, they're going to Barnstable, or they're doing private jobs. You know, the Mashpee Commons, the South Cape Village, you know, all of those businesses hire the larger equipment as well.
So if we do match DOT, they might stay here instead of going-
Are there any other terms and conditions that you offer versus DOT that for the same price make us more or less attractive to somebody who's got a handful of big trucks?
Yeah, DOT actually has a lot more equipment requirements than what the towns have historically required. They require all of the trucks have GPS. They require, you know, specific equipment within the truck itself that adds thousands of dollars to, you know, the price of getting out those trucks.
So if I had five-ten wheels I owned, and I had the same basic hourly, I'm gonna come to you, right?
Unless you already bought the other equipment.
Right. You've already divested, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I guess, I guess, in terms of, let me turn the question around. If the goal were to get an adequate supply of heavier trucks through private contractors, what would you, what would you recommend with this bid package and/or terms? Because that's, I think what you're hearing from us is, we don't want to do last winter again.
No.
Correct.
We don't.
So if it takes, you know-
$5 more now?
Whatever the, and is there anything else in your terms and conditions that's gonna make you be their first choice, not third?
Her recommendation is in the sheet that was just distributed, the gray sheet.
Right, right. But on the ten, on the ten-wheel, and I'm assuming this is an 11-foot plow because it doesn't break it down on the old list, but we're, we're second from the bottom.
Right.
So if we, if we- Yeah, if we bump it up.
What's that one?
We're coming to 115. If we went to 120, we're equal with Falmouth.
But see, the note on Falmouth is with his sander. So if you add our add-on for the sander, we actually exceed Falmouth.
Falmouth, right. See on the bottom?
At the bottom, there's a-
$31.
But Barnstable, we are, we will be below Barnstable.
Fee for the sander.
Right.
I mean, I just don't want to go out with a pricing structure that has us with a bunch of four-wheel-drive pickup trucks.
And what happened last year, the four-wheel drive-
That was the problem by the snow.
Right, I don't want to do it again.
No, I don't think anybody does.
Well, there is still gonna be a need for the pickup trucks, you know, in some of the neighborhood roads.
They were your backbone of your private fleet last year. And you don't, that didn't work well.
For the heavier storms.
For the heavier snow.
That's-
Guess what? You know, we're in a, you know, everybody, everybody in the world says storms are, you know, bigger and more severe, and that's just, we have a different reality now. So I'd rather not have the strategy that serves the town perfectly fine for the last 20-something years when we divest, after we divested from our own equipment. Let's, you know, let's, I mean, maybe it's gonna be a light winter, in which case it doesn't matter because you're not gonna spend this money.
Right.
So I'd rather have us gear up towards the new reality of what the weather and climate looks like around here and be prepared for it rather than going backwards. So, you know, if it's to match the state DOT thing, great, I'm all for it. If it's something else, tell us what that is. And I think you're, what you're hearing is, you'll get it. But we don't want to be in a position of having, you know, not addressing it now and then having, not having the private fleet you want, and then having, we're stuck.
I would suggest go with the mass DOT rate, and then-
I don't see how that can go wrong.
I don't think so either. I make a motion to go with the mass DOT.
I'll second that motion.
The way to go.
Any other comments?
I'm just reviewing the comparison.
And I guess my only other thought would be, you know, to then aggressively go after the contractors who have heavier equipment and make it known to them that's down their side.
That we're interested.
We want, you know, given the choice, and we figure out what you need for small stuff to do the smaller roads, where you need a little bit more nimble. But, you know, then aggressively go after the ones who have the heavier equipment.
No, we certainly will spread the word. It may be too late because both Barnstable and Mass DOT have that $5 additional upcharge for early-
Sign-ons?
Sign-ons.
Well, at least you have, you have it there to give.
Right, right, right.
So the only thing I see here in here, it looks like if we did the mass DOT, the, do we have a lot of nine-foot plow, four-by-fours? Because that looks like actually that goes down.
Right now, we have both the, right, the eight and the nine-foot.
Do we have a lot of those?
We probably have seven or eight.
So if everyone sees where I'm looking at is, my suggestion would be is, if we went with the mass DOT rates, but on the nine-foot four-by-fours, we kept the rate of 75 instead of the 72?
Yes.
That's fine.
That makes sense?
Yes.
Okay.
We have a lot of in-house equipment.
Yes, we have in-house.
Right.
Okay, do you want to redo your motion then to mass DOT with the exception of a nine-foot plow is $75?
Or just accept where the recommended one was higher?
Yes.
Yep.
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Yes, yes.
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 Yeah.
That's a new one, you get more than you asked for.
That doesn't happen too often.
I think that shows how much everyone wants this one to go so well.
Like you buy the snow plow and it doesn't snow.
So no. We can't say that we're not prepared for it.
No.
And that's what this is about.
What this was all about.
Right.
The salting is big though.
Okay, we have approval amendment, Great Neck Roads, oh, the cemetery.
We actually have one more-
There's a couple more.
Snow-related.
Go ahead.
And that's the, the snow removal policy itself as it pertains to the treatment of roads. Right now, our policy is that we treat all of the main roads, which are listed on the memo that was distributed to you, and then we spot-treat the other roads as necessary. That means, you know, hills, intersections, you know, those types of areas. What I think just handed out is, again, just a comparison to what other towns of similar size to Mashpee do. Most of them do have that same policy with the exception of the Town of Harwich, which does salt all roads that meet their requirements. So, before we get into the winter season, I guess I'm asking for the Board to consider the policy and if you want to change that so that we at DPW know what the expectations are moving forward.
And my suggestion is, we make it clear that the policy is to ensure that all roads are plowed properly, whether it be public or private. We get into these exchanges on an annual basis, particularly with the do-not-plow list, and I think we've reached a point where unless somebody's got a pothole that they're just not addressing, and we can lead them right to where the coal patch might be that could facilitate fixing it, I think it causes a lot of dissension and a lot of conflict that doesn't need to be. We should consider it fundamental to taking care of safety in terms of access, whether it be police, or fire, or ambulance. These roads have got to be taken care of as quickly and as effectively as possible. We've been given the resources by your actions just a few moments ago. Now I think it goes part and parcel to the policy.
One question being dirt roads.
We will plow dirt roads as long as they meet the requirements, which are, you know, in relatively good condition. We don't obviously plow down to the dirt.
Okay, I just brought that up because I know we still have a lot of dirt roads around.
Couple of questions for you, Catherine. You know, our policy talks about not plowing until we're three inches.
We're out when it starts snowing. I mean, we're, when it first starts snowing, we are out treating the roads, and then as soon as there is some accumulation, we're out plowing.
The main roads, anyway.
Depending on, I mean-
Well, it depends what we do with this.
Right.
So, I know you try to treat in advance, but, you know, our policy, if I remember, somewhere I talked about, you know, we start at three, we start moving snow at three inches. Right?
Yes.
Is that the norm?
It really depends on the specific storm.
No, 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 elsewhere.
Oh, elsewhere?
I guess, what's the, when does, how much snow does it have to be on the road for DOT to call it their plows? How much snow does it have to be on the road for?
I mean, I'm sure you've all seen the DOT trucks sitting in the rest area just waiting for the, the snow to start falling. DOT calls them out fairly early. Other towns, you know, I think Mashpee is unique that our police department will actually call us during the evening hours to let us know.
I thought that's who made the call.
The police department does notify the DPW Director.
That's right, as long as I can remember, it's always been the police department makes the call to-
I guess, the reason I ask is, you know, you can get two inches of snow, and it freezes, and then it's, you know, it becomes a-
That's not the norm.
Elsewhere.
Yes.
Right. So my question is, why we do it?
Elsewhere, I think it is perhaps the normal that they wait a bit longer. For Mashpee, we are out as soon as it starts snowing, first with treating the roads, the main roads, I will clarify. And then, once there is some accumulation, and then depending on the forecast, if the forecast is that we're gonna get 10 inches of snow, everyone will be called in fairly quickly to keep ahead of the storm. We don't wait for three inches to accumulate before we call in either our staff or the contractors.
If the forecast is you're gonna get two inches of snow tonight, and that's it, what do we do?
And, well, again, looking at the forecast is, as you mentioned, the potential that, that is then gonna freeze, then we will call everyone in because we know we need to clear the roads before that snow freezes, you know, particularly once the cars have traveled on it and packed it down.
Right.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it's, our equipment goes out first, right?
Yes.
In a slippery road, it's a slippery road, whether it be black ice, snow, packed snow.
Right.
If it's slippery, it needs to be treated.
Yeah, and I've heard myself, the police will call out DPW. Even on nights that there's no storms, I've heard them call them out.
We get calls for black ice frequently, right?
So, in looking at, you know, we've got to provide what Barnstable does, and they've got a, you know, very different approach to private roads in general than we do, both for upgrading and plowing neighbors. And looking at our policy, it strikes me, you know, the policy is, well, our existing policy is fairly broad, and so, we can change it, we can not change it. It strikes me that the nub of the issue is the don't-plow list. You could, you could leave our policy exactly as it is and change the don't plow list process and solve 90-something percent of people's complaints about private road plowing. Because our policy says we're going to plow private roads, but they just can't be on the don't, don't plow list and then we have this, and I'm not saying whether it's right or it's wrong, but we, so I'm actually not super concerned about changing the policy, it's about how we deal with the operational aspect of that list. And so, you know, I, you know, I don't have any grand idea on how to, how to deal with that. You know, I don't know where you think, you know, there would be some room within that, the construction of that do-not-plow list, part of the fun, to, um, to change how you put people on it or how you put roads on it so that it become a much, you know, only the worst of the worst, where you potentially damage equipment by going down, it would appear on it, or how, you know, how would you propose to handle that?
Well, I, I have to disagree-
Just one question on that first because it was new to me last year. Even the no-plowless roads get plowed after a certain amount of inches, I was told. Is that true?
That was, um, I think a few years when we had, again, one of these abnormal, hopefully abnormal storms.
So, that isn't a policy?
So, it's not in the policy, that was a decision of the town manager.
They, they changed.
Right. I, I think the policy would need to be changed because the, the qualifications for private roads, what is required is spelled out in the policy. The clearing of the overhanging brush, the defects in the road, um, that is all, the requirement for signage, that is all in your policy.
And I believe the policy in the past has been, despite what you have in written format in front of you, if it reaches the point where it's a safety issue for accessibility to public safety, it will be plowed. That's where there's been a little bit of flexibility.
See, but even on the, I mean, you know, on the pri, on the question about dirt roads, if you talk about qualifications for private roads, roads that's be laid out and constructed, shown on a plan approved, endorsed, recorded, the subject of control law, away in existence from the bylaw became effective. So, I mean, dirt roads aren't, most of the dirt roads aren't laid out.
Correct, yeah. There, there are, um, a few off of Monomus Goy, um, there's a section of Wheeler Road, but, you know, some of these, um, Eleanor's Cove-
Yep.
That is not a road that we plow. That's not a laid-out road.
Right.
Um, similar to, you know, forget dirt roads, we don't plow, you know, the, the roads in a condominium, we don't plow the roads in, you know, either of the trailer parks because those are private properties, similar to roads that have not been laid out.
Parking lots.
Parking lots, driveways.
So, what, I guess, I'll re-ask my question. What would you change the policy to? If we said, we want to do private roads-
Mm-hmm.
What would you do? Or how would, what would you-
If you did, wanted us to do all private roads regardless of condition, then in your snow removal policy, I would recommend that you eliminate paragraph two, paragraph three, and paragraph four.
But I don't know if you want to do it regardless of condition, right?
Well, I-
I, I guess, no, I'm just asking-
I guess that's what I'm asking you, is sort of, is there, are there, you know, levels of do-not-plow on your list? There's some that, you know, the road's in lousy shape, there're any overhang, you know, you're afraid you might break something going down there versus roads where, yeah, the road's fine, there's some branches, you know, some clearance issues, you know, get those cleaned up, no big deal, you go ahead and plow them. I mean, what, where, where do you draw the line? I mean, I'm asking you not to tell us what our policy should be, but as a, you know, professional DPW director, where would you draw the line? Or would you just say, I'll plow whatever you tell me to plow?
Or for that case, wouldn't it be the contractors too? Because contractors would refuse to drive, to ruin their truck.
Right.
I think as, as the town manager indicated, when you get to a road that has such significant potholes that there is concern for damage to either the town equipment or the contractor's equipment.
Not to mention the safety of the operator.
Right, right. Then, then I would say that that probably, those would be the roads that, that should be on the list.
Would you be in a position to, if we said, we want to do private roads with, you know, obvious hazards to safety removed, would you be in a position, given the, the work that was done to construct the no-plow list, would you be able to differentiate which roads you could just go ahead and do because of the new policy and which ones you'd work-
Essentially, you'd be removing, um, the roads that were on for the vegetation issues, which, on the no-plow list, they're identified.
Overhanging brush. There's a big difference in my view of the overhanging brush, and the director and I have discussed this, there's a big difference between overhanging brush compared to a pothole.
Correct.
Um, I don't think you want the plows to stop because a leaf is going to brush up against the truck. And I know I'm exaggerating a little bit, but at the, at the same time, this is what causes a lot of frustration.
But you don't want to take out a $10,000 blade on a-
No. And at the same time, um, I think a little bit of common sense and good judgment goes a long ways. If you want the spes, the specificity in writing, um, then I would suggest that possibly take a motion tonight to allow the director to have the discretion outside of the policy in case we get a freak snowstorm between now and the next meeting, and then at the next meeting, come back with a draft in writing.
I mean, I guess what I'm looking for in part of the process of addressing people's concern that they want, you know, they're on private roads, we need to provide some clarity. I think we need to provide clarity for your sake, for her sake, and for the sake of the drivers who are out there interacting with the public and sometimes, you know, are subjected to conversations that are challenging.
And as we know, the next day, the phone calls-
Right, so we want to be able to say, you know, under our new policy, these roads are coming off the do-not-plow list, they're good to go. And then whether there are some that are going to stay and some, the ability to have some outreach to the people who own those roads, say, fix A, B, and C and we'll plow your road. We've changed the policy, but, you know, for the, one of a couple of reasons, your road is a hazard to operator's safety or, or town equipment, you need to fix these things.
That's right.
So that we can commute, because what, what people will hear is, change the policy, plow everything, and there's going to be some subset of those roads that, for the reasons Catherine's mentioned, aren't going to be benefiting from that change in policy and we're all going to hear about it. When it comes, I'd rather, you know, I'd rather change the written policy in two weeks, define who's off the don't-plow list at the same time and have a strategy for communicating with those people who continue to have issues so that they know what their obligation is.
And what is the board's appetite for the policy in terms of the parameters?
I'm-
I would say plow.
Good with saying we're going to plow private roads.
Plow.
Absence some safety or, or equipment.
The exception of the hazardous roads.
If it's going to damage a plow-
Right.
I mean, I can see not going down the road, but I, I agree.
And that's a thing, you know, recognizing things break.
Right.
You know, until you can't, but, you know, where there's a, if you had a problem-
How many, how many roads out there right now are-
If you had a problem getting an ambulance or a fire truck down a road because it's in lousy shape, then that would seem to be qualified.
Here's my question though, and I have no problem with, with going and plowing the roads, but y, you may have a dirt road that's fine at the beginning of the season and halfway through it, it's just torn apart. So, how, how do you address that? How do you, um, who maintains the road in the middle of the winter?
Half the people who are not living there.
You know, i, i, you know, how do, how do we deal with that?
They're probably down in Florida.
Right.
You know, except for, you know, there might be five or six.
The one person's down at the end of the road.
Right, exactly.
Right? So, I mean, look, let's be honest, you're trading one very large set of headaches for what will be a smaller class of similar-sized headaches.
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, I talked to Barnstable, you know, they do everything.
Yep.
Right? And they have problems with liability, they have problems with property damage, they have problems with equipment, but they do it because they went to town meeting decades ago and that town meeting said, do it.
Right.
And so, for the DPW and the manager's office, it's a headache, right? It's not a headache with people saying that, you know, why didn't my street get plowed? They might say, why didn't my street get plowed as well as I wanted it to? That's a separate conversation. But, you know, it has created persistent liability and equipment maintenance problems for the town of Barnstable and it will here too.
Does already.
Huh?
It does already.
It does, I'm just saying, you're trading, we're not making the headaches go away, we're providing an enhanced service to a lot of people in town and let's just go into it with our eyes open knowing that there will always be somebody who has an issue with how their private road was treated, but I think the point of the exercise is to shrink that universe significantly from what it is now.
I think what we should do is what the chief suggested, do a temporary motion that Catherine, if there was a storm before our next meeting, would use her discretion and come up with a pol, new policy for our next meeting to be voted on.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Catherine, you, I think you got the idea of what the board's looking for, right?
I believe so. And can I just add one comment?
Go ahead.
Um, just removing the requirement for trimming back the vegetation is, is fine. What that allows us to do is, is make sure that we can plow the full width of the road. So, as long as people understand if they don't trim back their vegetation-
You go around it.
Exactly. Don't, don't complain about the poor quality of the plow.
You're going to give complaints. It, this doesn't end, I mean-
But I think that's the key, what you just described. I think that's the key.
Well, the next step is we're going to start trimming vegetation sometime in the foreseeable future. I mean, that's the, that is where we're headed.
Yeah.
And I'm not saying it's a bad thing or not, but that's what's going to happen.
As in month two of trimming the town road.
Okay.
Might have to take some old ladies' failures and cut them down and see where you're at, if they have some complaints.
John, a former DPW director, more to add, comment. You want to list heaven?
Uh, I don't think it's proper at this point.
Okay.
Now, we're going on to the kids' club. Are we all done with, uh, done with snow and ice?
Unless you want to parlay that into the assistant director.
I know, I know.
Acceptance of bids, a replacement bid for roof at the kids' club, you want to take that next?
Sure. So, um-
Back to the top.
We received three bids for replacement of the shingle roof and I am recommending that the contract be awarded to Kelcor Inc. at a base bid price of $22,262, a unit price for replacement of the wood sheathing of $200 per 32 square feet. We did check references, all of their references were, were very good. They are committed to, to getting the work done this fall, which was what we had asked, and this is going to be funded through the money that was transferred-
To price account?
Exactly.
Yes.
I make a motion to award the contract to Kelcor Inc. of New Bedford in the amount of $22,262 for the base bid and with a unit price for replacement of wood sheathing of $200 per 32 square feet.
Ask one question before you do this. Do you expect the sheathing to, there to be substantial sheathing replacement? Okay, because they're a lot higher on that than, I wonder if they're trying to make up some of their-
Yeah.
Little bit.
It is surprising.
No?
We don't.
Okay.
Uh, I have a motion for, uh-
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Just to those at home, when we discuss enterprise account, uh, the kids' club is a self-supporting, uh, town department that, uh, money's collected for tuitions and such, such are used to, uh, pay for the operation and things like this, so it doesn't come out of the general fund. The Great Neck Woods Cemetery Rules and Regulations, I see our chairman of our cemetery committee is here.
Yes, Ernie Fratilia.
Do you want to come up in?
Go ahead.
Policy or ask for-
So, um, yeah, it's, it's been several years since we've had to look at any amendment to, to the rules that were adopted when the cemetery was first built. Currently, the regulations, um, place a time-of-year restriction on the placement of artificial flowers on the graves. They are only allowed in the winter months. What the commission is recommending is that restriction be eliminated and that instead the provision that at their or my discretion, that we can remove, you know, items that have become unsightly dangerous, deteriorated, or diseased, or interfere with the maintenance of the cemetery, that we would be able to remove those items.
Any questions?
We're very sensitive to any, anything that comes before or some, this is the first time.
I know myself, I, I, I think it's, it's great for me, I have a loved one buried in there.
Certainly understand that changes need to be made with-
And I know it's been talked about before, is if, as long as it's kept in good taste, I don't think anyone will want to see it deteriorate in any ways. Uh, any other comments or questions?
I agree, I think it's, uh-
Do I have a motion?
Yes, you do. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, your assistant public works director slash town engineer.
Much too probably selectmen godly chagrin, suggesting that we should go with an assistant DPW director for the purposes of addressing, uh, operational management. All of our major departments are staffed with a department head and assistant department head, except for DPW. DPW did have at one point an assistant, in fact, that's what Catherine was before she became director. So, in assessing the needs, um, this isn't to suggest that there may not be a compelling reason for an engineer, what it is intended to suggest is that right now, the more pressing need is the assistant director. And with that in mind, um, we don't have to create a new position because this was a position that was already in existence. This is essentially taking the funds for the, um, engineer and, and using them for the purposes of recruiting and, and hiring an assistant DPW director. As far as any changes to the job description is concerned, under the minimum requirements, it used to say, and I quote, "More than three years of public works construction," that is being recommended to be changed to five to seven years. And then some of the bullets that are currently under essential functions are being modified as, as well. But essentially, what you have before you is the assistant public works director position that's being recommended for posting, advertising, and moving forward with as, um, has been in existence in the past.
How quickly could you get somebody in? What's the target?
I'm hoping to start with the advertising next week as soon as the board-
I have a-
Understands the action.
I have kind of a different type question because it's not so much in this one here, but in the past, I've seen this musical jazz-type thing. Town engineer is now designated in our budget, but non-hyatt, right? Non-fund and non-hyatt.
Right.
Is that going to be eliminated? Are we adding on a public works director and then six months from now going for a town engineer?
I'm not going to say never. Never say never.
But we can always put it back on. I'm saying, is it going to be eliminated now on, from the budget?
Yes, the funds, just to be clear, if you, if you follow- Yes, the funds, just to be clear, if you, if you follow the recommendation, the funds that are earmarked right now for the engineer-
Yeah.
Be redistributed to pay for the assistant public works director.
Okay.
So this person could be an engineer?
Could be.
But you're just-
But right now, I'm looking for an assistant director.
Right. For the same money.
So John, if what you're asking, since I don't want to push the engineer, am I going to push to hire an engineer next year?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
I want to-
But I, well, the thing is, is I don't care of anything, but-
Let's cut through it. That's what you're after.
No, 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 not at all. I'll cut through it. Is, I don't want, three years from now, someone saying a new position, but we already have that, so we don't have to go to town meeting.
Right.
I want it, you got to go back to town meeting and say, "Hey, we asked for one six years ago."
Well, in actuality, the town engineer position was created in 1987.
Okay, that's what I mean.
Sad vaca, sad, sad vacant era.
So we're using money right now for town engineer that never went to town meeting.
Well, did, in that we went to-
Back in 87.
Right, but we also included it in this year's budget with the-
I, I realize that.
Statement that we were going to hire an engineer.
Right.
But I'm saying musical chairs is what-
Yeah. I mean, my, my primary, you know, I thought a town engineer that could serve as functionally assistant was, met our needs, but, you know, clearly, you know, I know you guys looked a little bit, and wasn't the pool that you wanted, and I think the pressing need now is to have the management structure and have a, you know-
I have no problem with either one or both of them, I just don't want it to become automatic, we just okay, too.
No, I think this solves the majority of the problem.
And I also think you need to keep in perspective that our DPW does even more than some other DPWs, as far as the buildings are concerned. So I, I think it only makes sense to have an assistant.
Well, then we just vote for one in town meeting.
We voted the funds, the engineer, not the assistant.
The engineer.
Oh, okay.
So we're just reallocating the dollars?
Yeah.
You're reallocating the dollars, and when you see it advertised as an assistant DPW director, you're not saying, "What the heck is the town manager doing?"
Both positions exist in the personnel administration plan, we're just choosing-
They do.
We're just choosing to allocate the money we thought we were going to put to an engineer to an assistant director.
I see it this way, we can use a consulting engineer whenever necessary, we can't use a consulting DPW, assistant DPW director.
You're right.
That, we need, we need an assistant.
You're, you're right on point.
Right.
You're right on point. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Anyway, I'll make a motion, we sanction the use, the use of, or the filling of the assistant town planner, or town, public works director, we already did that.
We already did that in October.
I know, I don't want to go back on that one.
Don't go back on that one.
No, no, no.
I second what he tried to say.
Yeah, you know what I meant, right?
All of them favor?
Yes.
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 I think yes.
I think yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fill it fast, will you? Everybody?
Okay, down to new business. First, the article is execute deeds at conveyance to two parcels, 108 Orchard Road, 132 Quiniquisette Road, Habitat for Humanity. Pat Costello's already gone through it, everything's okay, and this is something we do all the time.
I'm making a motion, we execute the deeds for the parcels at 108 Orchard Road and 132 Quiniquisette Avenue to Habitat for Humanity.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Approval, appointment of zoning board of appeals, Norman Gould, associate member.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Approval appointment, zoning boards of appeals, Bradford Pimsley, associate member.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The next one-
I ask for indefinite postponement, not because I'm not interested, but because of the cycle, and I've spoken with somebody in charge.
Frank?
That was you.
Just the spouse of a sitting selectman.
I wonder who. Approve appointment of EDIC, Denise Statson, real estate representative on the board.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yes. Replacement of border health representative to Mashpee Cares Committee, approval to appoint Flynn Harrington.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ernie.
Acceptance of resignation from human services committee, Kathy, Kathy Molyer Feria.
With regret, and could we send a letter?
Would you like a letter?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Yep.
A proclamation for pancreatic cancer awareness day, November 13th, 2015.
Want to read it, Andy?
Do we want to just, do we want to read it?
Do you want to read it?
Go ahead.
I'm making a motion, we approve the following proclamation, World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in 2015, estimated 48,960 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 40,560 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth-leading cause of death in the United States, and projected to become second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits of just 7 percent. And whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, and 73 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis, while 93 percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas an estimated 930 deaths will occur in Massachusetts in 2015. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world. And whereas there will be an estimated 367,000 new cases of pancreatic cancer diagnosed globally in 2015. And whereas the health and well-being of the residents in Mashpee are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, we, the Mashpee Board of Selectmen, do hereby proclaim November 13th, 2015, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the town of Mashpee.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I'm going to let the town, the town adjury tell us what this is. Approval of closed town hall November 9th with the purpose of attic cleanup.
This is cleanup day, this is organization day, and I think we probably need this, quite frankly, for house cleaning purposes once a year. If we go up there in the summertime, it's too hot. If we go up there in the middle of the winter, it's too cold. This is a good time for everybody to clean up their office space, as well as the attic, and what we're trying to do is get a few things organized. DPW is facilitating this, and it's very difficult to conduct an operation like this and do it effectively while we're trying to service customers. So even though the staff would be working and we're paying them, from 8:30 to 4:30, town hall with your authorization, in fact, would be closed. And we will post it, we will advertise it, we'll get the word out, we'll have a sign on the door, et cetera. But for the purposes of everyday operations, people will not be coming into the building, we'll be taking care of our organizational efforts inside.
Any questions?
I'm making a motion, we authorize town hall to be closed for cleanup purposes on November 9th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
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 Discussion EPA grant award.
Yeah, very briefly, several months ago, you authorized me to apply on behalf of the town for a grant from EPA to do groundwater investigation for site suitability analysis for a potential permeable reactive barrier somewhere in town as part of our nitrogen program. I went to an event on Friday that announced the town had been selected.
Very good.
Have a kickoff meeting, I think it's Wednesday, see this Wednesday or next Wednesday, start the process on the site, and so as that project proceeds, I'll let you know. It's all to our benefit, you know, let us understand a little bit more about whether that technology has a potential applicability, and I think the next phase would be, once they do the evaluations, proceed with some of the sites that work, you know, we might be able to pursue money to actually install such a system and be a test case. At that same event, they did also announce under the EPA Healthy Communities Program that the Wampanoag Tribal Council has been awarded just under $200,000 to build a oyster reef in Popanous at Bay. It'll protect four miles of shoreline, it'll enhance and supplement the work that Rick York's doing for our shellfish propagation program. So another, you know, significant investment in town of Mashpee that really benefits everybody and provides, you know, for the shellfish grant, for the tribe, the opportunity to have a much more self-sustaining oyster population for their farming activity, but it has potential significant benefit to the whole town.
Great.
Good. Good news. The benefit of having a federal budget.
Communications and correspondence. John, it's still, you, you have anything, liaison report, anything?
Actually, if someone else wants to go in, I'm just going to catch up on my notes real quick.
Well-
I can, I can tell you that the solid waste committee is winding down, and we're going to start to compile some suggestions to the, to the board, and that should be with the, before the end of the year.
Mashpee Veterans Day celebration, ceremony, I'm sorry, will be held November 11th at 9:45 at our Veterans Park, for one. Number two, the second annual Fill the Van will start now and go through November 18th to fill the van, and items and donations will be picked up on Wednesday, beginning at 10:00 a.m. Suggested items are non-perishable food items, shampoo, soap, toothpaste, laundry detergent, cleaning products, dish soap, diapers, baby wipes, and formula. It's done through town hall, and you can drop your items off here. Each department will have a box set out, and we can fill it. And we want to stuff this van more so than we did last year. And number three, Thanksgiving Day dinner will, you can call the chamber, for Mashpee residents, can call Katie at the chamber on the Friday before, and we will deliver your dinner the day before. And you can call Katie at 508-477-0792. And I'm good.
Kind of in the same thing as that, Mashpee Human Services Committee are very successful with their little food drive at annual, at the annual town meeting and distribute it to local pantries. Nothing-
I have nothing else to add?
I'll go back, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So the school committee did actually approve private investigator to be hired, so, and I believe they were looking for results of the investigation for, in like two weeks, so.
Anyone have anything else? So entertainment motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yep. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.